Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this Monday, November 4th. If you can believe it's November. November 4th meeting, the Waterloo City Council meeting. Have a good crowd in the audience tonight, and welcome to all of you who might be on our, watching us on our public access television station tonight. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole? Here. Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Walper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Craig Clark, except he's not here, so how about Mr. Buck Clark instead? So if you would all join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is for number 14, to delete item number 14. Also, with the approval of an amended agenda, I move that we approve our minutes.
Mr. Hart, would you also add the consent agenda item? It's right under that, if that's the new one.
And also approve the consent agenda item on the travel request for February 8th, number 4.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the agenda of the minute? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to, we receive, place, file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B8, also with the approval of the consent agenda. I move that we pay our bills, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $2,304,671.47, 2,304,671.47.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
If I could just ask a minor point. No, a couple items on there identified as chloro items, are those in fact new construction? Some of those $80,000 projects on page two there, maybe like item number 11, item number...
Yeah, I think there's number 13, number 14 are both, yes, they're new Habitat homes for $80,000 in the chloro.
Okay. Thank you.
Further? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number 2, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Greenwood?
I'll make the motion, receive, file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing. That's for the LaPorte Road Pumping Station and Forest Bank Contract 847.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file, item number 2?
There were none.
Do you have anyone in the audience that would like to speak against, for, or against the LaPorte Road Pumping Station project a second time?
I'll make that motion then, to close the hearing, receive and file. So I'll make the motion and close the hearing.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? I would just add, this is a long time project. We've been working on this for a long time, and there's a couple of really happy people out in the audience, so congratulations, we'll get this done tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Resolution ordering the construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to open, read the bids, and refer to Waste Management Superintendent for his review.
Second.
Very good. It's a roll, I'm sorry, it's a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a lot of interest in this project. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 bidders tonight. We have an estimate of $584,040. 584,040 is the engineer's estimate, 9 bidders.
The first bid is from Baker Concrete and Escavating of Waverly, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $648,907, 648,907.00. The next bid is from Dave Schmidt Construction Company Incorporated of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $447,679.45, 447,679.45. The next bid is from Denver Underground and Grading Incorporated of Denver, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $487,757, 487,757.00. The next bid is from Holland Contracting of Forest City, Iowa. The total bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $837,323, 837,323.00. The next bid is from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa. And the bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $964,143, 964,143.00. The next bid is from Rick Lips Escavating LTD of Anamosa, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $352,134, 352,134.00. And the next bid is from Stick Fork Construction of Hudson, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $576,585.85, 576,585.85. The next bid is from Top Grade Escavating, Inc. of Farley, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $509,950.50, 509,950.50. And the final bid is from...
Chig-fry.
Chick-fry Escavating of Dubuque, Iowa.
Yeah, you would know.
I wasn't gonna try that. And the bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $680,626.35, 680,626.35.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Item number 3, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 3, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file, proof of publication, and notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2014 Dane Complex Lighting Project.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the Dane Complex Lighting Project? Second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, and receive and file, and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids, and refer to Leisure Services Director for review.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we just have one bid tonight on the Dane's Complex Lighting Project. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Estimate of $110,000, or, please.
The bid is from KW Electric, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid price is for $87,987, 87,987.00.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask just a quick question on that one?
Absolutely.
So, we've got a Blackhawk County Gaming Grant for $72,000 on that, so is the bonding amount just the difference between the 72 and the 87?
Paul?
Yes, Paul Hunting Leisure Services Director. We have a total project budget of $132,000, which includes this project, and we also have scoreboard work that we want to do out there. And yes, the bond money would make up the difference.
Okay.
We also, just for the record, sent out to five or six electrical contracting firms, and I don't understand why we only got one bid. It's a mystery to me.
We're busy, got lots of building going on in Waterloo.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 4, please. Mr. Getty?
Item 4 is to rezone from Lockhart Realty of Cedar Falls, Iowa, to rezone approximately one acre of land located at 114 Monroe Street from R2 One and Two Family Resident District to R2 CZ Conditional Zoning District for the purpose of legally re-establishing an existing truck repair shop. Make a motion to receive, file, and proof of publication, and notice of public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to rezon this land?
There were none.
Excuse me. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against rezoning this particular piece of property? A second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
Make a motion to close the hearing, and the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Very good. Motion and second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
I'd like a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time the ordinance amending Ordinance Number 5079 as amended, the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending an official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4 approving a rezone of certain property.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt that ordinance.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Getty. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Let's do the resolutions three at a time, please. Five, six, and seven. Yes, Ms. Cole?
I know we adopt a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck in the amount of $177,636.50 for the FY 2014, 14 Sturit... Whoa, let's try this. Fourth Street Bridge Slope Protection and River Wall Repairs, Contract Number 855, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And six is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number two with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $24,600 for professional services during the construction phase for the FY 2014, Fourth Street Bridge Slope Protection and River Wall Repairs, Contract Number 855, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Seven is a resolution approving reaplication, renewal of Iowa Department of Natural Reef Resources MS4 Permit in the amount of $1,250 for storm sewer discharge, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding five, six, or seven? They're roll call votes. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. Let's try the next three, eight, nine, and 10, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greenwood?
I raise a resolution approving PSA with AMIT Incorporated of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $19,100 for preliminary survey and engineering services in conjunction with safe routes to school, and that's at Irving Elementary Traffic Signal Project at West Fifth Street in Baltimore. Authorize mayor to execute the document. Nine is a resolution approving amendment random of land lease agreement, and land lease agreement between Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Waterloo and the Waterloo MSA LP doing business as Verizon Wireless for Verizon to lease land at Burns Park for $800 per month for five years for the construction of a freestanding cellular tower. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 10 is a resolution approving release of revisionary rights document for the June 25, 2007 Development Agreement with Leon Dorf LLC to allow businesses along the southern side of San Marnin Drive to not have a lien or a cloud of title on their property in abstract continuations, documents, et cetera. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, questions, comments regarding eight, nine, or 10? Mr. Mayor, on number eight... Mr. Schmidt?
Go ahead, David.
Mr. Dave, Mr. Jones?
On number eight, is the $19,100 included in the $92,000 for the total expenditure on this project?
Well, I don't know. Sandy, please.
Sandy Grico, Superintendent Traffic Operations, yes, it is. That $92,000, we are very fortunate to get that application in and receive the money. However, we are trying to list it in there, hoping not to use bond money for that. If we run a little bit short, then we'll have to use some bond money.
Good question. Thank you.
Sandy, while you're up there, I'm sorry, I wanted to ask a question too.
That's fine. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, yeah. And obviously, that's a great project, because we know it's been a dangerous intersection, but, so if that, if that gets done that way, are we then going to have a stoplight at Baltimore, and then a manual stop sign at Western, and then another stoplight at Locust, or is there a plan?
There's a plan to eliminate that stop sign.
Yeah, the stop sign?
The stop sign.
Okay.
In the middle.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Questions regarding anything else, nine or 10? They are roll call votes. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion's carry. Let's do the last three, 11, 12, and 13, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 11, I'd like to adopt a resolution setting a date of hearing as November 18, 2013, to approve requests by the Iowa Development Enterprises for a site plan amendment to the R3RP Plan Multiple Residence District to allow for the construction of six twin homes on approximately 1.68 acres of land generally located at the intersection of Mills Lane and Dizert Road, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice. Item 12 is adopting a resolution setting a date of hearing as November 18, 2013, to approve requests by Iowa Development Enterprises for a site plan amendment to the R3RP Plan Multiple Residence District to allow for the construction of one twin home and two single-family homes on approximately 0.8 acres of land generally located along the south side of Summerlin Drive adjacent to 5732 Summerlin Drive, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice. And item 13 is adopting a resolution setting a date of hearing as November 18, 2013, to approve requests by Iowa Development Enterprises for a site plan amendment to the R1RP Plan Residence District to allow for the construction of five single-family homes on approximately three acres of land generally located north of the intersection of Burton Avenue and West Donald Street at the former Van Eaton School Site, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding 11, 12, or 13? Good projects. Madam Clerk, they're roll call votes, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Number 15, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Walper?
Number 15 is a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by adding subsection 145A to 5850 Kimball Avenue activated hybrid beacons to section 540, obedience to the official traffic control devices.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Getty?
This does not include cameras, correct?
That is not cameras, no, sir. But Sandy, you can just say yes. Is this the Shalhust Road, Shalhust and Kimball? Is that those beacons that we're talking about? Are these, these are different ones? Okay, very good. Thank you. It's a roll call. Any other questions? It's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion's carry. And finally, it's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
The motion carries. You want to try them all three? All right, let's, Mr. Hart's going to try to do sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen together. They're all setting dates of hearing, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, instruct Community Planning and Development Director to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, Form 16, demolition and site clearance services, and no regulated asbestos contained materials for 1001 Linden Street, and in seventeen, for an asbestos baitment for 217 and 219 Jefferson Street and 300 West Third Street, and for an asbestos survey in eighteen for properties located at 1423 Hawthorne Avenue, 223 Independence Avenue, 927 Mullin Avenue, 421 Almond Street, 425 Almond Street, 928 Mulberry Street, 408 Saxon Street, 420 Dawson Street, 426 Cherry Street, 134 Dearborn Avenue, 717 Vinton Street, 67 Franklin Street, 520 Cottage Street, 120 Smith Street, 820 Fowler Street, 1013 Lincoln Street, 409 State Street, 100 Blackwood Avenue, 3137 Independence Avenue, 2375 Independence Avenue, 4012 Levity Road, and 210 Clay Street. I move that all of those are approved.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of these?
I was going to ask what block, what address that was on Franklin Street, but I won't do it, I'm just kidding you.
Oh, sick.
I gotta have some.
You're a short timer now.
I'm a short timer, I gotta have some.
You're just aggravating. Mr. Zelker, you've been a busy boy getting all of these things together. These, you know, this is, I think it's just worth mentioning that these are all 657A properties, and it's, these are blighted homes that are needing to be taken care of, and while some of them, it takes us a long time, it's a long time coming, this is, these are all very, very good moves, so, thank you, Councilman Hart. All, no, roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
That's a motion first.
I'm sorry, it is. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
For sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, I move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
For sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
And that is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.